I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Kansas City Kansas Community College, November 11th, 2014, meeting to order. And I'd like to ask Dr. Walker to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Walker, and thank you for your service. Are there any other veterans in the room? Please raise your hand. All right. Thank you all for your service. Ask for roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydenthal.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna make some changes in the agenda. We're on item three. We're moving the executive session. That was, I'm sorry, it was item number 11. And it will, we'll go into executive session after item Roman numeral six. I'd like to ask for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from our October 14th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We've moved in second and approved the minutes from the October 14th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Audience to patrons, petitioners, anyone wishing to speak to the board? Chair recognizes Mr. Bland.
Yes, I am Merle Bland, and I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board. You should have a copy of the legal petition for the Community Improvement District along the State Avenue corridor. Business West is asking that the trustees approve the addition of the Roger Smith Toyota property, parcels number 223-601 and 223-602 be added to the Community Improvement District approved by the college.
Any questions of Mr. Bland?
And what would be the ramifications of such approval?
Second.
Well, you would add to the existing property that you already have to Community Improvement District. The district has three objectives: appearance, marketing, and security.
Comments from the general counsel on how we should proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point in time, you should do your due diligence and review the petition. I don't know that it requires action at this time. I think Mr. Bland is providing it to you. He's indicated with some documents that, at least in the packet that I've been given, some additional materials and information which I would suggest that the board review. And then I'll be able to come back with a recommendation at a later time. This is my first seeing it as well, but this is not the first of these types that we've seen. And I might ask, Mr. Bland, what's been the consequence or the impact of similar measures in the past?
You mean, how have people reacted who have been asked to sign the petition?
Yes. And what has been the consequence to the community, I think is what Trustee Rios may have been asking you as well. And have you been pleased with what has resulted?
Well, it was passed by the Kansas Legislature about three years ago. It was primarily a development tool for people like the folks that were rehabbing Windup Plaza. Our approach was a little different in the fact that we are dealing with the area from 64th to 94th and from 78th Street, from State Avenue to Riverview. And our approach is to have an entity, the Business West organization would be the managing organization for that, but we would concentrate on these three core issues. And we would have a structure somewhat similar to what Downtown Shareholders has.
Mr. Bland, question?
Yes.
Have we seen benefits? What are the benefits we've seen?
Well, we're still in the process. You have to have 55% by both assessed valuation and acreage. And we're still in the process of gathering those petitions.
The 55%?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Once we reach 55%, then the Community Improvement District will go into effect.
Okay, Merle, I have a question.
Is he here? Go ahead.
Okay, on the, Merle, on the 0.25% add-on sales tax?
Mm-hmm.
To what we already have?
Yes. That is correct.
So in addition to?
Yes.
Okay, and when it says bond marketable, you mean, okay, the commissioners? Tell me what that means. Tell me what number nine means.
I don't have a document in front of me. What?
Bond marketability, Merle?
Well, we would have an advisory committee of 11, and seven of those 11 people would have to be property owners. The college could be part of that if it so choose. But we would devise a marketing plan to market the entire corridor.
With Trustee Flunder, I think to answer your question, if you're looking at nine, it indicates that unified government is not making any representations about the marketability of the bonds and is indicating that that might be better borne by a private interest if you're looking at bond marketability on section nine. I think that's what that means.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't.
But you don't have it in front of you. I'm just looking at.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, all we're doing is, we will be able to raise approximately $300,000 a year. And that money will be spent within the district. We're not interested, this petition was drawn in a very generic way, but we're only interested in raising a quarter cent sales tax and putting together programs that affect the area, our affected area along State Avenue.
And Mr. Bland, on the very last page of what you've handed us, you've actually set out some frequently asked questions, which talks about what the money raised could be used for, to clean team, to fund various marketing and promotional efforts, which you mentioned, to sponsor retail training for business owners, and to help develop this corridor. And so trustees, on the very last page is a quick explanation of how the proceeds raised would be used, and then, of course, you could decide the benefit that might adhere to the college. But that last page is also helpful.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bland?
I just have one, having gone through that initiative, the Downtown Shareholders in the downtown area. Of course, in that area, we had a lot of nonprofits and educational institutions that were exempt from the tax.
Right.
Are you gonna be actively sort of seeking involuntary contributions from?
Well, that'll be, that could be, that could be a situation. Our first step is to get the Community Improvement District established. And, I mean, presently Business West, which would be the managing organization for it, as we have proposed it, you know, has dues. And, but Downtown Shareholders, it's based on property tax, I believe. Ours, since we have a pretty strong retail base in this community, it would only be based on sales tax.
Yeah, that makes sense. They're two very different.
Yes.
Mr. Bland, what is your timeline for approval from us?
You know, we would like to have it by the end of the year, if not, early next year.
Okay. Well, we'll review it and take it under advisement, as our general counsel has instructed us, and we'll have an answer back for you at our December meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next roll.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Good morning to everybody on the board and the administration from the college. My name is Jeremiah McCleeny. I am the advisor for the African-American Student Union here on campus. And this Saturday, November 15th, at 6:00 PM, we are having our 12th Annual Silver Harvest Banquet. And I just wanted to extend a personal invitation. I believe that most of you got letters in the mail, but I wanted to come and personally invite you to the banquet. Tickets are on sale for $20 if anyone is interested in purchasing one. And they're available from any member of the African-American Student Union or from myself and the admissions and records office. So, thank you for this time.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move along to communications. And I'd like to ask Athletic Director Tompkins to bring up the volleyball team.
We'll let Coach Bruno address the board real quick and kind of give you a recap of what happened this weekend and everything, so.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good morning.
I wanted to pass this along to you guys, if you have a chance to look at it.
Excellent.
This is a present accent.
It looks pretty good.
Is that first one?
Yes. Last Saturday, we got the opportunity to host the first district tournament here, District N. And we were, we had a first match at 12 o'clock. We won that one, got to play in the championship at 4 o'clock, and ended up winning that one as well. So we, we are so very excited. Nationals are in Phoenix, Arizona, from the 20th to the 22nd, so we will be heading down there to represent KCK.
Awesome.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
I do. Why so much success? What's the thing about this team, Coach, that you believe is the heart and soul of it and really is the key to your success?
They work hard. They come in the gym every day. They've been here since July, working. They've had one goal. We have nine sophomores on our team that have been here for quite a while, and they have kind of bought into the success of our program and what we are trying to teach. And because of that, that has developed into a kind of a culture of winning. And so they have done a very good job this year. They came with a focus. Since day one, our goal was November 8th, and that was when our districts were. And so they came in knowing that and worked for that, and because of their hard work and success, we get to go to Phoenix.
Thank you very much. We're extremely proud of you.
Thank you. We are so happy. Thank you guys for everything that you do.
And I want to commend the team because, not just for your actions on the court, but in the classroom. You are dedicated scholar athletes representing Kansas City Kansas Community College at the highest standard. And we're very proud of you, and we want to wish you continued success. And when you become national champions, we'll have to see if we can get a holiday or something.
I'll agree to that one.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Before they leave, Chairman Maddox, would it be possible to get a picture of the trustees with our volleyball team?
Absolutely.
So, if they just maybe could come behind, and I don't know how you could do that, Mr. Kimbrough, just love to put you on the spot, don't we?
We don't have a camera. We're gonna have a camera.
You got him this place.
Looking video.
All right. Just so.
All right. Now we can applaud. Thanks for getting up early to be with us. Good luck in Phoenix.
Thank you.
All right, Mary Hoffman, come tell us about Alumni Weekend.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing us to be here once again and visit with you about our, one of our newer adventures here at Kansas City Kansas Community College. First of all, kudos to these young ladies. They can tell people that they not only won the district championship this fall, but that they were doing that the year that we started having an alumni organization. So we'll be building on that through every athletic team. We'll be building on that through every academic area. We'll be building on that through all levels of the community, of friends and alumni. I have been out of the office off and on now for the last two or three weeks with a friend with throat culture, having to have surgeries. And Andrea is swamped with her regular job, so we have not been able to get together and formally meet with all the teams that we worked with and the different levels of committees. So I will be giving you a probably rather lengthy written report at some point in time. And I want to obligate myself and Andrea to that and the goal. We won't come here and bore you with it at a board meeting, but we will make that available to all of you, and it might even be after the first of the year. She took some great pictures, and so I'll just share some of the highlights with you of our event that weekend. First of all, the mayor came for opening ceremony. We had a proclamation, and that'll be framed. He presented, or Dr. Givens, he presented that to Dr. Givens at the opening ceremonies out here by our soccer field. And we arranged for a flyover that night. We had a plane fly over just at the ripe moment. Actually, we can't take credit for that. It's just that our higher power wanted that to happen. We presented Dr. Givens with a wonderful blue double plaque. If you haven't seen it, please stop by her office and do so. And we have arranged for some little charms to be given out to the board, and we'll let Dr. Givens do that when she thinks it's an appropriate time. So we'll be passing those on to her. Of course, Andrea and I are a dynamic duo here, and we haven't been able to duellize here the last couple of weeks, but we will be doing that. And she's being shy and retiring and sitting over the table, and I can't keep going on without acknowledging her presence and her invaluable support with this entire thing. She is so well-connected and so well-organized and knows so many people in her network here at the college and in the community. So certainly, it was a village that was putting this event together. One of our highlights was that we, if I were gonna, and I may do a story about this, we had a gentleman and his wife call and make a reservation. I only had about six or eight reservations made ahead of time. So that in itself was wonderful. They came and registered when they were supposed to. They attended every event. They even came to our history forum and panel on Saturday morning. They met at Kansas City Kansas Community College when they were both nursing students, when the school was still downtown, in a variety of buildings. They stayed involved in the community ever since then. It's David and Nancy Sanchez, if any of you happen to know them through the community. So they were wonderful to give us feedback, and we may be doing a little story about them and using them as our cover story for any promotional things we do going forward. I'd like to tell you a little parable. In 1972, my husband and, at that time, my one daughter and I moved to Manhattan, Kansas. My husband was sent there to start an office for his company. He was selling insurance at the time. I was expecting my, no, and I also had my one-year-old. So we were expecting my third. We moved up there, and he had found a fantastic old white frame house at 311 North 14th Street, which is right across from City Park. This house was built in 1914, and it was the president's house. And the president occupied that home until they built the red brick on the campus. So, it was fantastic. It had an attached double-car garage with that old radiated heat in the garage. That was pretty upscale for 1914. We can imagine what kind of cars were being driven around in 1914, and it was a double-car garage. But like most, it had been purchased by the head of the veterinary science department, A.J. Frick, and so it was a rental. In fact, I understand the ambulance, local ambulance company operated out of the basement of that house when we decided to rent it. And we rented it with the option to buy. Well, like most rentals, it hadn't been taken care of very well. And it was a gorgeous white frame, but it didn't have anything in the yard. There was no landscaping whatsoever. And Carl and I both realized that what we needed to do to really give that house the magnificent framework it needed was to make sure it was landscaped well. We couldn't afford very much. He was starting a new business. We had one and a half children and had the third another month. And so we decided our Christmas tree that year would be a ball with roots that we could plant in the front yard. So we would start our landscaping that way, put it in the appropriate place where the landscaping would appear. And then, as we went on, the next Christmas, we'd buy the other tree in a ball. And eventually, we'd put the other bushes along the sidewalk and plant the flowers. Well, ladies and gentlemen, what we have done this fall is we have planted the first tree in the landscape of our alumni association. And we feel very good about that. Andrea did some research online with other schools that have been operating for years with alumni associations. Our itinerary was right in line with what other schools are doing. So we set up a skeletal schedule that could be plugged in as we go along and embellished as we go along. And we felt very good about that. Our best-attended events were the ones where we provided food, with one exception. The Dean Sing was the most well-attended and most popular event. And some of these people right here performed that day, and some of you attended. Dr. Givens performed. Don Ash performed. This gentleman down here was in attendance with us and cheering them on. We had a lot of students showing up. We had other faculty and staff coming down to watch what was going on. I think Patrick and Dewana came. Dr. Walker performed. And some of you, knowing that you aren't as musically talented as others, delegated or abdicated your piece of music to Dr. Walker. She did a good job for several of you. And that's the way we do it. We share responsibility. We partner with one another, and we go forward. I would say altogether, we had probably at least 100 people signing up for one event or the other. We will go forward. We really want to get all the academic areas involved. The nursing department came up with an all-day open house made available to their alumni who were coming back. We're gonna be challenging the departments to keep track of their outstanding students that are here now, try to remember who in the past we might want to stay in touch with. And you'll be seeing a lot more landscaping going on. We've already done that in fertilizer by having our website have a link, and we want to thank Baz and his department for doing that. And I would say our base committee is our landscaper group, and we'll be going forward with that. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity and supporting us in going forward with that. We're gonna make sure we have somebody from the board represented on our planning committees going forward, and hopefully, everybody. The more the merrier, and with a little more time, more than two months, we hope we can put together a phenomenal event for later years and to continue to embellish the experience that our students have here and reward those alumni who've gone on and who still feel a lot of pride as they come and share that with us. So, we have packets. We made packets for each of you, and we're gonna give those to you today. They're dated, but you might want to see what kinds of materials were donated to us and put together. So Andrea's gonna help me pass those out. And you want to say anything? No, she told me she didn't want to say anything, but I knew if we didn't, yeah, Marianne would get on her. Okay.
I do. Oh, go ahead. I thought you were. Well, no, I just wanted to ask if you'd had an opportunity to, both of you or the committee, to communicate with the new marketing team as they're developing a plan right now. I think this should be a really important part of that plan and marketing for the Alumni Weekend, so.
I haven't had the opportunity, have you? But I believe that. I think, I'm hoping to be able to visit with them. I was able to hear their presentation earlier last summer, and as I told Dr. Walker the other day, the experience our jazz band's gonna have going to Cuba, when we come back and share that with our community going forward, it's not over in December. It starts in December. Our whole alumni experience wasn't over in October. It started. Something that's gonna go on for future years with Kansas City Kansas Community College. So, I'm hoping we can meet with them. I know they're still doing research, and we, you know me, I'm willing to plug in whenever I can to any of that stuff, so. Are there any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you very much, Mary. Really exciting.
Thank you. If you'll just give us a couple more minutes, we'll pass these out, and then we'll be gone.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Patrick, would you give us an update on the gala?
Real quick, wanted to give you an update on our first-ever 4.0 gala that we held on October 25th at Lake Quivera Country Club. And before I get into some numbers, I want to, obviously, an event like this is not pulled off by just one or two people. So I want to give out some thank yous to some of the folks that really helped me pull this event off. And first and foremost, obviously, is Dewana in our office. Dewana did yeoman's work on this event and helped make it the spectacular success that it was. We also had a lot of volunteers from here within the college that helped us the night of the event. Andrea Chastain and Janice Spillman helped us out with our auction, some other stuff. Michael Kimbrough and Randy Rohr from Media Services helped us with some pictures and at the event that we got to share with some of our attendees. And Lisa Klein in Information Services created a website, or a splash page for us on the website that we could direct people to to promote the event, which was also very helpful that we included with all of our promotional material. Also want to thank our gala committee that helped and worked with Dewana and I putting this event together, including Kathy Brydenthal and Ray Daniels, who are the Board of Trustee reps that helped us with that. And then we also had several of our students, who some were scholarship recipients, help us and volunteer the night of the events. We could kind of show off what the college does. Daniel Kennedy, Brittany Wells, and Olivia Hogendorf helped us out that night also with registration and doing some other stuff. So again, it takes a team to do something like this, and I want to say thank you to all of them for helping us pull off this great event. So now let's get to some numbers about it. First off, we had some very positive feedback on the event. We had a lot of feedback that Lake Quivera was a great location. And I think one of the most important things we heard was that it was a really fun event. And I think when you create a fun event, people want to come back the next year. So that's what we're hoping this event created for folks. We ended up with about, actually technically selling the event out with 320 seats were available in the ballroom. Because of some sponsors who were unable to fill their seating, we had to move some people around to make some tables fill up, we ended up with a little over 300 folks at the event. So, a little disappointed that we didn't physically sell it out, but technically, the event was a sellout in advance, which was good. We didn't sell as many individual tickets as we expected, but we sold more on the sponsorship side, which is a good, so it balances out that way. But we thought we might have a few more, just twosies and foursies here that would just come to watch the event. Numbers-wise, the gala generated a little over $108,000 in total income for the college, after backing out about $37,000 approximately in expenses. We did a net income of over $100,000. We did a net income of over $70,000 for this event, which is a little higher than what I reported to you earlier. But I hadn't got the bill from Lake Quivera yet. It was a little lower than expected. Amazingly enough, the alcohol portion of the bill was lower than we expected. So that helped our bottom line a little bit, less than we had budgeted. In that night, just that night at the event, in our budget, when we estimated this, we estimated about $10,000 for the auction and all the events going on that night. We generated over $30,000 that night. Breaking that down, that was $14,000 from our fund-a-need, which is going straight to the scholarship fund, $13,000 from our live auction items, $1,500 from our silent auction, and a little over $1,000 from our heads-and-tails games that we played. So we were obviously ecstatic about that. Dewana kept chiding me that I was lowballing that number the whole time, but I was a little worried about it, but obviously for no reason. So we were excited about that. And obviously, the money for this fund and majority of it goes toward the scholarship fund. We've already transferred $16,000 to our general scholarship fund. We anticipate transferring all the $14,000 raised from the fund-a-need to that. And then after all bills are paid, we'll anticipate obviously transferring some more of it. We're hoping to get about $40,000 to $50,000 from this event to the general scholarship fund. So we were quite excited, again, a tremendous success for the event. And last but not least, we have set, we have decided that we like, we're going to make that third Saturday in October kind of our traditional date for this event. So I have reached out to Lake Quivera and booked our date for next year. So you can mark your calendars for October 24th, 2015 will be the date for the Second Annual 4.0 Gala at Lake Quivera. And I will be getting out save-the-date info here very quickly. And hopefully, we'll be able to recruit the Nygro brothers to help us again with the live auction. So again, a tremendous success. Thank you all for coming and supporting the event. And we're looking forward to doing bigger and better things. We're not quite sure what we're going to do for an encore next year, but we're already talking about it. Any questions or anything I didn't cover that you'd like to know more about?
Well, it was a great event, Patrick. Congratulations. I think you need to add the Kansas City Royals to your thank you list.
Yeah. Yeah, we joked that when we.
I don't know how you pulled that off.
I would like to take some credit for it, but I can't do that. One thing we did not factor into picking our date was Royals possibly being in the World Series. I thought the K-State-Texas football game might be a detriment to us, but the World Series, I think it added a lot of excitement to the event. And being able to show it on the big screens there at the event. Luckily, when we turned it off, they were winning. So luckily, it wasn't, that game particularly didn't end real well for the home team, but I think it generated a lot of interest and excitement in the room and helped us as we moved into the auction and all the other stuff. And our awards for our Wyandotte County of the Year, you know, former mayor Joe Riordan, and in our distinguished alumni, Karen Orr, who's the chief nursing officer of Providence Medical Center, were very excited about the event and really enjoyed themselves and were excited about being there. And we are working with Jeff Sixton and his group. We're going to have a display along the wall across from where the Mid-America Education Hall of Fame winners are displayed. We're going to start putting together some boards to display the winners of those awards as we move forward in the future.
And the students that you brought.
The students, yeah, the Daniel and Brittany and Olivia, I think, for those of you that were able to attend, when we did the fund-a-need, the Nygro brothers told us the fund-a-need will make more money than your live auction will. And I kind of laughed at them. I said, "I don't believe you." And it generated about a little over $1,000 more than the live auction. And Brittany coming up and telling her story was, again, much like the baseball game, you couldn't have scripted that any better. I mean, that was from the heart. I was looking at her up on the stage and quite honestly, as we all remember, it was really, really hot in the room. I was afraid she was like going to pass out on us up there. But she was very nervous and she was getting very emotional, kind of rehashing where she had been to where she was now. And she got obviously very emotional giving her speech. And I couldn't have hired an actor to fake that one any better to do that for us. So maybe we'll bring Brittany back again for another one next year if she's anywhere in the area for us. Or we'll find another student that can tell the story. So we wanted to try to keep the focus of the event on the college, the mission of the college, and I think we did a great job of doing that.
And I think we're going to get more input. I think it's our committee meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're getting some, yeah, we got some, obviously, I have a long list and so does Dewana, we do, that we kind of notes for what we want to do better next year. Again, things that most folks won't notice behind the scenes, but things that we noticed that can make it better. And I'm sure the gala committee will have some input for us, too.
Share that at the next meeting. But the one thing I do need to say, particularly for a first event, it was timed so well. I mean, nothing really dragged on, you know. That's very unusual and that's very commendable.
I got a couple, a friend of mine who works, who is very involved, the Shawnee Chamber, they do a gala similar to that. He compliments, said the same, he's like, "Wow, this really moved well. I didn't really feel, I wasn't bored. It moved nice and quick." And so, yeah, we tried to keep it in that two to three, you know, two, two and a half-hour window of getting everything done, because, you know, people don't have busy schedules and obviously on a Saturday night. And, yeah, you want to keep them entertained.
Well, congratulations again, Patrick. Outstanding event.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Way to go, Dewana. Good job.
Yeah, Dewana. Okay, we're going to move into executive session. Ask General Counsel, how much time do we need?
Forty minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to go into executive session for 40 minutes?
So move.
Did I get a second? Okay. Go move a second and we're going to executive session for 40 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, the first 25 minutes will be under the personnel exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a personnel matter, to protect the privacy interests of the individual involved. And then the last 15 minutes will be under the attorney-client privilege to protect matters which would be deemed privileged within the attorney-client relationship.
Thank you. You've all heard the explanation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry. We'll take a five-minute break and enter into exec session. We're going into the boardroom.
We're going to be coming.
Need a motion to come back into session?
So move.
Second? Move the second, we'll come back into session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back into session and we're on item seven. And we need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees Treasurer, Dr. Susan Lindo.
Move that we approve Treasurer, Doctor.
Second.
Move the second that we approve the new Board of Trustees Treasurer, Dr. Susan Lindo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you.
And next up is the audit. Are you going to lead us with that, Dr. Lindo?
I believe we have our auditor here to make the presentation to the board.
You should all have a copy of the audit in a folder at your place.
Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, trustees. How are you today?
Good morning.
Thanks. Veterans Day. Before we really get started too much in working through the draft reports, I want to make sure everybody has a copy of the draft that we've prepared with conjunction of staff in front of you. Today's audit really is kind of a summation of a long process that we begin early in the year as we discussed with the Board of Trustees some time ago. The objective and the intent was to build a more timely process and to provide more input and information to the board. That began frankly with a initial audit calendar that was developed with Doug Welch, subsequent Mr. Layton. And we really kind of mapped out how we could reach certain key dates to stay on track and we've done that. So those dates included a preliminary base set of financial statements at the end of September, which were provided to staff. When I say provided to staff, were kind of agreed, built from the trial balances generated by the college. Subsequent to that, at the end of October, this draft report was prepared in conjunction with staff. I will tell you that most of the footnotes that are enclosed in this, when I say most of them, generally all of the footnotes that are enclosed in this report this year are developed through the commitment communication with staff. And that's a very positive step and a very positive process. Approximately two weeks ago, I personally met with staff and management of the college to kind of go over the draft report, go look through details. We also in addition met with the Audit and Finance Committee to go through the report with details. And today, dated November 6th is our report date, to stay on that schedule, you have a draft report early in November for you to not only provide you with the information, but the information in a timely manner. And so I'm happy to be able to report that to you today. As we go through this, it's important, there's a subtle shift here, and that is, this is a draft report because it's really your report. And it's intended to give you the opportunity to review it, make comments, raise concerns. There have been some comments raised and some changes made as we've gone through the system. So that's a good process and that's a good control as it relates to financial reporting. So if there are no further questions, we'll begin to sort of walk through the report. The report itself is generally framed and in a format that is consistent with the prior year. There are no real new accounting standards or guidelines that are going to impact the reporting format in the current year. We are concerned about a possible issue that relates to pensions for next year, but we'll have to see how that plays out and the standards as they're established. So as we look through the report, it begins with the independent auditor's report, which again, has not been issued, but it is drafted in an unmodified manner. And that's for people who may not be that involved with our industry, formerly was considered an unqualified. It's the best opinion you can get from an outside audit firm. So this is an unmodified report. It deals with the statement of position, the statement of changes in position, and the statement of cash flows as they're issued from the college and the related disclosures. In addition to that, if we look on page three through page seven, you'll note that there is a section referenced called Management Discussion and Analysis. This section of the report was developed by Mr. Welch, Mr. Layton. There was input from others within the college staff. And it directly relates to the underlying activities of the college as it was performed during that business period. As an auditor, we really don't spend a lot of time in this particular area, except to note whether we think something is false or misleading and we don't. They are traced back and supported by the underlying books and records and the audit report that's issued. As we go to page eight, you'll see the first financial statement, which is the statement of net position. For some in business or not-for-profits or other entities, this would be referred to as the balance sheet. And the balance sheet is simply a listing of June 30th, 2014, of the assets and liabilities of the college as they were combined together. The college uses a myriad of funds. I want to say there are 16 or 18 different funds that are tracked and measured within the college's control framework within the computer systems that they maintain. And those funds are sort of aggregated together and eliminating the entries back and forth among those various funds to generate these. We perform a myriad of auditing procedures as it relates to them, but as a board member, I think the ones that I'm going to highlight are the most critical. So on each of the bank balances, the certificates, those types of activities, we have third-party confirmations from financial institutions that document those balances. And we see nothing there that is concerning or alarming to us. That is also true with the certificates of participation as they relate. The tuition receivables and the other receivables, we were able to track down to underlying financial records. And also, we recalculated and frankly worked to develop with staff the methodology for the uncollectible port and how those allowances are calculated. And we're comfortable with those balances. Inventory and prepaid expenses, we prepared, we performed very exact procedures as it relates to the inventory and how it's calculated from Fund 16, which is essentially the bookstore. Those inventories shift a little bit over time, but frankly, we spent a lot of time in terms of the measurement of that particular activity. The non-current assets, I'm happy to report to the board this year that the capital asset reporting model used by the college, which in the past has created some hardships in terms of timing of financial statements, was largely resolved. I would say that certainly by September 15th, maybe the end of September, we had a complete capital asset listing that reconciled to the books and records of the college. And so that's quite a positive step. As you know, the college has been under a lengthy, well, I won't say lengthy, but a pretty good pace of building. There's a lot of construction, a lot of activities that are associated with the mission as you've defined it. And as a result, there's a lot of capital assets out there that need to be recorded and systems built around that. And so what we do in that particular case is we look at the underlying invoices of newly-added assets. We look at depreciation methodologies for assets that are currently held in place. We recalculate that depreciation and we're comfortable with those numbers. As we look at the liability section, and I will go back, so the assets generally are up about $10 million from the prior year. Half of that is in cash and that cash is really up mainly because of a bond issuance which incurred in March that hasn't completely been spent down. And the other half of that is in fixed assets that have been constructed. But realistically, when you're done with the construction from the March process, you're really up $10 million as it relates to capital assets. Okay? The liabilities component of the balance sheet, we go through a similar process, a similar methodology in terms of our auditing of those transactions. And we trace back the payables. The reason the payables were down largely over last year frankly, is because last year there was a large retainage payable that was in, recorded in the books and records as it related to some construction projects that were completed, but that's not totally wrapped up and essentially was the tech center. That's been resolved. So at year-end, we had about $700,000 in accounts payable. Our compensated absences were similar to last year. What we do on that is we obtain a listing of all the employees of the college and we recalculate what we think to be accrued second vacation time, as it were, at that ending date. And we're comfortable with those numbers. And also analytically, they're very similar with last year and that would be our expectation. Funds held for others, essentially, there is a little bit of a recalculation there in terms of how we're classifying some items, but essentially, that is Fund 72, which is activity funds, agency funds held by the college, and also some transient insurance that's paid by employees, but maybe not paid until the subsequent month for health insurance. We have current portion and long-term portions of debt. On all the debt issuance, we were able to confirm with third parties exactly what those balances were and whether or not we were compliant with our payments and we are comfortable with that. So that essentially is the balance sheet. And that's really a critical picture for not only the board, but also for people who utilize the financial statements, because it really gives a snapshot into what are the underlying assets and liabilities of the college at year-end. And I think as you look at that, I think that the vision that you see there is sort of an institution that's growing strongly in terms of the capital assets and the investment that you're making into the college. Okay? Page 10, I'm just, I'm not going to speak too much about page 10 and page 12. As you know, the Endowment Association, which has now been renamed Foundation, their financials are embedded into yours under GASB. They're considered a component unit of the college. That reporting may change now because there's some new relationship there and then there's a possibility that those could be blended in. Again, we'll kind of work with staff over the next year to determine the best reporting format. Those are not large balances, but they do give a reflective picture of the Endowment Association at June 30th and also the activities that are related with that on page 12. I'm going to go to page 11, which is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Essentially, this is the income statement of the college. This is really, the college's mission isn't to develop an income statement, it's really to educate students and to foster the development of students. But as a reality, this is really sort of the sidebar, the financial performance, as you will, as you go about performing that mission. And as you'll note, the operating revenues are separate from the non-operating revenues. And essentially, the non-operating revenues are called non-exchange services. In other words, your ability to assess property taxes are considered non-operating because they're not directly related to the instruction of the student. So we break those out so that you might see that. And as you can see, the operating revenues are up slightly from year-over-year. A component of that is a little bit in the change in the way the state accounted for some tech center students. But really, the other part of that is there was a nice or a large grant associated from the DOL for the, I want to say it's TE4, I might not.
T4E.
T4E, I might not have that acronym correct. And so that's a factor in there. But if we look at that in aggregate, our operating revenues are up about $1.4 million year-over-year. And the operating expenses are up about, I don't know, $1.5 million, something like that year-over-year. And then down below, our non-operating revenues are down slightly, about $1 million year-over-year. Some of that is due to timing. Last year, there were some nice collections on some delinquent taxes that were experienced countywide that didn't necessarily occur in the current year. And that's reflective in that. And then lastly, another factor in there. And then lastly, another factor in there is there's some larger interest expense that was incurred because several of the bond issuances not only were in place, but also they were accruing interest as they occurred. All that in aggregate means that the college increased its net position by about $800,000 year-over-year. And I think that's an important number because that really measures, you know, you're in a stronger position to go forward because your net assets are growing and continuing to grow. Okay? I'm going to pause there for just a minute, having gone through the financial statements, before I go through the disclosures. I know this isn't quite as exciting as the volleyball team, but, you know, it is important. Okay? Seeing no questions, I'm going to move through the disclosures, and I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. All of these disclosures are very similar as they were in the prior year. Each year, when we approach an audit, we look at specific areas and we say, you know what, we can spend some more time in this area this year, we can spend some less time in this area. In this particular year, one of the areas that we spent more time in frankly is debt. We wanted to make sure that the disclosures, as they relate to long-term debt, and the two bond issuances that occurred last year are recorded correctly and measured correctly on the books and records of the college. Note A is generally a summary of all the accounting policies. Most financial statements and reports that you read, Note A is essentially going to be sort of a summation of who you are, what you do, and what accounting policies and procedures you have in place. There's really no big change in Note A. Note B speaks to cash investments. Again, that's sort of a template, boilerplate footnote. It really speaks to the fact that, you know, where is your cash held, how is your cash held, and are you at risk? All the institutions that you do business with from a banking perspective offer FDIC coverage. Some of your accounts obviously are above that. There are pledges for collateral on certain accounts. We would encourage staff always to continually work to make sure that all those banking relationships are well documented, and they are, so that, as we move through that. Note C is capital assets. This is a big, a big piece of paper here, and I'll just draw your attention to this fact. If we go to the lower-left bottom and we start with July 1st of 2012, the capital assets net were $35 million, and then if you kind of go up to the right, June 30th, 2014, they end this year at $57 million. So that's a $20 million increase in capital assets and investments made on the college there on page 19. That's a strong commitment, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I just want to make sure, you know, when you look at that, that's really a fundamental investment for what you're making in the college. I think that footnote does a good job of sort of explaining where those capital assets are broken down, how they've changed over time, and really, what a big use of your funds are. Note D is revenue bonds and certificates of payable, and really, it needs to be taken in connection with Note E, because those are really commitments and contingencies that are associated with the college. You'll see all the bond issuances there, you'll see all the amortization schedules there, you'll see generally all the interest rates charged and any nuances associated with that debt and/or associated with the leases as they've been listed. This is quite an expanded footnote from last year. Couple reasons for that, we have two new debt issuances that we need to document and sort of walk through, but also, we spent a little bit more time making sure that the leases and some of the other stuff was disclosed in the financial report. Note H is the Defined Benefit Pension Plan. This is really sort of a interesting area. Currently, the college doesn't make a contribution to CAPERS in a traditional sense. CAPERS makes the contribution, I'm sorry, the state makes the contribution to CAPERS on behalf of the college for applicable personnel. That uniqueness may create some accounting treatment changes as it resolves going forward, but I'll be honest, those are sort of being written and resolved right now. I don't know that I believe there's really going to be a substantial change or shift in the financial statements, but if I believe that to occur, I'll be the first one to notify management and staff that we need to at least educate and inform as how that could impact this. Note I is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Again, the college offers some post-employment benefits which are scheduled to expire on June 30th of next year. This is, this is an area where our staff really spends a fair amount of time in terms of recalculating and measuring what that liability would be. We know, I shouldn't say we know, we have a decent estimate of how those liabilities are going to play out for the people who have currently chosen retirement. What's the unknown there is how many people are going to elect to take advantage of that plan. And I think staff does a pretty good job, and we've got a good process in place over the last few years to calculate that. We're comfortable with that calculation, and we have reviewed that calculation with management and discussed it amongst our engagement team members. Note J is essentially a listing of the student loans as they are provided and described for the current year. Note K is the new pronouncements that I'm talking about with GASB 68. Note L deals with a subsequent event that happened on the purchase of some property subsequent to year-end. And then Note M is the Endowment Association footnotes. Essentially, the Endowment Association footnotes are all sort of wrapped up in there in one, but they're important because they really relate to the financial statements that are on earlier pages of this report. On page 33, some people find this to be an easier schedule to read. This is a supplemental schedule of changes in long-term obligations. The real reason this document is in here is because the Kansas Municipal Accounting and Audit Guide requests it. Frankly, I'm not sure it has to be in there, but they request it, and it's easily prepared, so it's included by management in the report. And also, there's a supplemental schedule of comparison of budgetary expenditures and appropriations. Again, we don't really audit these two documents, they're supplemental scheders, they're not financial statements in the normal context, but they're included in the report which is submitted to the state. We do review the underlying data, and in the source, in the case of the supplemental schedules of long-term obligations, you know, all those are subject to our audit procedures as we go through. So I appreciate your time this morning. I would like to stress that, you know, this is a draft report. We're interested if there are changes or items. I think in our informal conversations with both Susan and Doug and Bob and Dr. Givens, that in a week or so, we'd like to issue this report, but that's subject to changes and revisions that's prepared by staff and recommended to us that we can audit. Stand for any questions?
Do want to make the board trustees aware, Finance Committee did review at length with Mr. Miller, it was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting actually, that we had on Thursday, and we did discuss with our new treasurer, some policy and some timelines to have those executed following recommendations from the auditor. So you can be looking forward to seeing those in the coming months. I do want Mr. Miller to point out, there was particular staff that were helpful in following some of the recommendations from last year that made this year's audit go smoothly. It was reported, I mean, we're two months ahead of what we've been in the past, which will be very beneficial to us in regards to planning for our upcoming budget, which will probably have some unique challenges to it. So Bill, if you could-
Yes, thank you very much, Trustee Rios. Honestly, I mean, we set an aggressive schedule. Doug Welch was frankly my counterpart throughout the engagement, and really was a key driver in not only preparing the report, but also in critical changes as it went through the report, through the reporting process, in particular, capital assets, debt, leases, and commitments. So we just wouldn't be here with that. The one thing I would say, what does it mean to be early? Why is this, why is this important? I would just reiterate the fact that, you know, you have a lot of work to do. We can't really get in here and audit until the beginning of September. Even though your year-end is 6:30, you know, you've got students coming in here in August, and it's just not appropriate for me to be knocking on doors saying, hey, can I get a copy of this? They've got students to take care of. So we really condensed it into about a 60-day window, which really is important operationally because once we're kind of through this process, it frees up staff to really deal with some critical issues that they deemed important, and they want to take responsibility for and sort of clear out of the system. So certainly Doug Welch was critical, Bob Layton also was very instrumental in a lot of the critical aspects, and I would say that I had an open door and continual conversation if needed with Dr. Givens as well. Okay?
I have-
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I have several. Was it a, I can't read that fast as you talk, but-
Yes, ma'am.
So on the, on the CAPERS, was it a large change in our CAPERS or not?
So as it relates to CAPERS, the CAPERS contribution is really made from the state of Kansas directly to CAPERS. It doesn't go through the college's books and records. It's not recorded.
We just pay into it, and that's all?
Yes, that's right. So the employee has an employer portion, and that's a great distinction, but the payments that are made are made directly to CAPERS from the state of Kansas. So the payroll department prepares kind of a payroll summary, they submit it to the state, it's all done electronically, and then the state electronically funds those monies over to CAPERS. The reason that's important, and I'll pause there-
Where, where is that in here?
It's not in there, but in Note H, we discuss that in detail, and specifically, we say on page 25, employees of the college contributed $1.3 million to the plan. So that's the employees' portion. And then we also say on 24, that the employer contributions were remitted on behalf of the college by the state on the last sentence on page 24.
Okay. I got a note.
And this, and this is about 66 total employees, just trustee-
No, no, that's not correct. I'm sorry.
On-
Note H is the, is the CAPERS plan.
A I.
I'm sorry.
That's on Note I.
Yes, she's talking about Note H.
Yeah, I got a-
She's talking about CAPERS, trustee.
Talking about CAPERS, okay.
Yes.
Okay. On the, on the, do we have death and damages? Where's, okay, with the, with the new addition for the, where the students stay? The death and damages, is that all in here?
So we don't really talk about those in general, and I'll go into why that is. Note G, we have a risk management footnote on page 24.
Wait a minute. G.
Page 24.
Okay, I'm on 24, I don't see none. Okay, yes, I see.
The college carries certain risk insurance for basic property casualty and other damages. There are some deductibles that are attributable. However, at year-end, there weren't any unfunded liabilities that are out there that we're aware of, certainly none that are material. And then if those are repaired, those are probably in one of the repair line items on the income statement.
Okay, so it's repaired.
So you do carry insurance against that loss.
Yeah.
And, and we just, to sort of, the methodology that we use there is, we obtained a third-party confirmation of insurance from your carriers. I want to say that's, well, I won't mention the name, but we do obtain that. So insurance was in place.
Okay. And I know we got a lot of retirees coming up, because we had talked about that, but do we have, where is it in here that's the money for them?
Okay. If you go to Note I, and I believe this is the one that JD Rios, or Trustee Rios was referring to, this note really does a pretty good job of spelling out the policy, spelling out what, what staff has determined those liabilities are over time. There's two components frankly. There's a early retirement benefit, and then there's a health insurance benefit. They're sort of all lumped together into one policy and procedure.
Yeah, one policy.
We trace this back to the policy as it was adopted by the board, and the critical factor frankly in calculating that liability is it's scheduled to expire on June 30th of next year. So we have a pretty decent window, we know who could be eligible for retire, and how many are currently in the plan, and how that's calculated.
Okay.
So the way those are calculated, trustee, is, the staff sort of builds out an estimate of what the early retirement payments are, which are well-known, and then the estimated amounts for insurance, which are less well-known, but although estimated. And then there's sort of a net present value calculation that brings it back into today's dollars.
Okay.
This year, I would note, I believe this to be true, the number of people benefiting from the plan stayed constant. I believe there were five or six that went into the plan, and there were five or six that came off the plan because they had reached age. So it stayed at a constant level.
Okay. I probably got some more, but I'll call you, because I can't, I got to read it first.
And that's one of the reasons why it's in a draft form today. Are there any other questions?
Are you going to be there next meeting, or?
I haven't been asked that, but I'd be happy to, you know, whatever is requested, it'll be fine with me.
Okay. Oh, I got one more question.
Okay.
Are we ahead or behind or even on the student loans?
So the student loan portion of the compliance audit is not finalized, but I will tell you that I haven't had any findings yet in that particular area. I hope to have that done in the next week. So that's a separate report that's issued as it relates to the single audit. The three single audit areas trustee that were selected this year are the vocation grant, which is Donna Shawn, the Department of Labor grant, which is Eric Abernathy, and student financial aid, which is Mary Dorr. Again, those take us, I want to be honest, the student financial aid one of-
That's a Lulu.
I'm sorry?
I said, that's a Lulu.
It is, but, but also, our focus was really getting the financial report done for the trustees so they could see that in a timely manner. And also, when I say it's sort of hard to be in the school during August, student financial aid lags that a little bit because students are still trying to resolve aid issues even into middle part of September. So we really sort of aim to do that one near the end.
Okay. The reason I ask that is they got two new bills out on the student loans that might affect us.
Well, I don't, I don't think I'm going out on a limb on saying that student financial aid is a very fluid area, and changes are going to be impactful one way or another. They're, they're significant.
Bill, this, this draft report, is this sort of an interim report while you do the additional work?
Well, that was not my intention. My intention is that if changes are needed to be made to this, the other report is a separate report separately issued. It's really intended for compliance measurement on federal programs. You send it off to the federal agencies as it relates. Our hope is to be done with that in the next week or so, honestly.
Okay.
Our focus today was to get this before you as early in the year as possible so that you might have better information earlier.
Okay.
No, I think this will really help us in our budgeting as a board. I think it will help us decide and give us something to look at much, much, much earlier than we ever have before, for which to begin to formulate and frame some, you know, policy and so forth, to give Dr. Givens and the staff, you know, some direction earlier, instead of everything being done at the 11th hour.
Right.
Appreciate it.
As general counsel, how should we proceed with this report?
Well, as my understanding of this report is submitted for your information only, you will approve or accept it at a later time because Mr. Miller's indicated that this is a draft, and so I believe that your action has already occurred and that you've engaged him in discussions back and forth. And Madam President, that, that is all you intended for this particular item, am I correct?
The only, the only additional information I would add to that is, my expectation is that staff is going to review this along with board members, and if there are comments or concerns, changes may be made over the next week or so. At that point, we are prepared to issue our final opinion, which is the only page frankly that we sign in this document. Then it would be submitted back to you in a signed format for acceptance. I mean, that's my expectation, but certainly you determine that chronological order.
All right then.
Mr. Miller, you might want to comment. Is there another timeline that's at play here other than our desire, I should say the trustee's desire, it stated last year, to get this information much sooner than it had in the past? it had in the past, but is there a reporting that ends at the end of the calendar year that's of concern?
There are two reportings that are, well, frankly, there's three reportings that are applicable. The first one is the single audit must be done and filed with the data collection agency of the federal government within nine months of year end. Certainly, we see no issues with meeting that timeline. The second one is that under the electronic municipal market filings, which is called EMA, you're really, you should file by the end of the year for the debt covenants that you have and audited set of financial statements. And that would be our recommendation that these are completed before year end and filed. And the third is that the Kansas Department of Education, and I believe the Kansas Board of Regents requires a set of these as soon as they're done. I'm not aware of a set date, but I think generally they like to have them done within nine months of the end of the year. So I think we're in good shape on all those filings. The EMA filings, though, I believe are filings that are important to be made by the end of the year. And essentially, just for the board members, because I think this is important, I've left actually counsel a follow-up question on this, but these documents are made available public to all bondholders. And so essentially, that tells the bondholders that you're complying with the bond covenant, the covenants of each bond issuance that you have.
Bill, what's your competence level that you have appropriate and required access to all applicable data that you need to complete?
So I'll be completely clear about that. We had unrestricted access to books and records of the college. So I never felt like anyone was withholding any information to me. I will state that sometimes some of the systems that are used at the college can create some challenges as they relate to information back and forth within those systems. That's not uncommon to an institution this size, but I never felt that anyone was trying to withhold information from me in a particular area that I was conducting an audit on.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, my answer would be that you be prepared to act no later than your next regularly scheduled meeting. And I might also add that in years past, when you were pressed for time, which you are not, you've conducted or you've held special trustee meetings to get to meet the deadlines, which aren't required now, but in the event that there are additional comments or questions that you may have of your auditor, I would just say be flexible enough to establish another meeting before the end of November so that you can take final action in December in light of the EMA deadline.
Thank you.
Okay, can you add about the student loans?
Yeah.
At that same, okay. Okay, because if it happens in January, hopefully we'll be there in February.
So the only thing I want to make sure is that what we do in the area of student financial aid is that we test against the federal guidelines that are in place at June 30th, 2014. I don't really run tests or processes as it would relate to subjective changes that could occur going forward.
No, 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 Congress is going to be doing that. They got them out there. They already done sent them to me.
Okay.
And I need to know, am I in agreement or not since the election is over with? I'm ready to answer them.
Okay. Fair enough. Seeing no other questions, thank you for having me today. Have a good day.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to ask Jim Beechwood to give us an update on marketing, please.
Good morning. The primary update with regard to marketing has been with Trizola Communications. As you know, they were retained as our advertising and marketing agency. Over the past couple of months, they've been heavily engaged in doing what is termed fact finding. And essentially, what that's been comprised of is interviewing a number of individuals and groups across the campus. That's included the Advancement Council. They've attended student and college senate. They've also interviewed a number of staff, administration, and I think the number's a little over 50 at this point. And what they're going to be doing with that information they gather is put together essentially a brand strategy recommendation, which they're targeting sometime in December to come up with that. Again, it'll be some initial findings and then they'll present those to a core group and then we'll go further from there in terms of next steps. So that's been the primary focus at this point. They've had some really strong feedback from the groups and individuals they've talked with. They feel like they're getting information they can use to help shape the strategy and feel like they have good access to what they need at this stage.
Okay.
Questions?
Okay.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Givens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some announcements to share, some upcoming events and some dates that I think the board will find interest in. And one thing to tell you, there were several, you may not know, but several leaders were arrested here at the college last week because we were a part of the fundraising for the United Way. And they took pictures of us.
Appreciate that clarification.
They appreciated taking pictures of us in handcuffs. They made it really real. The sheriff, I mean, not the sheriff, but the, the, the chief. The chief of police came and put me, Chief Snyder came and put the handcuffs on and, you know, that was a weird feeling, although it wasn't real, to be in handcuffs and walk down the hall and then put behind bars and then people at the college had the opportunity to come and pay to either keep me in or let me out. And I'll never forget those who paid to keep me in. I'll remember that. But it was really a fun day and we raised, I think the amount was close to $800. Is that correct? Something like between $700 and $800 that day on just putting us in jail. People really cared about that.
I do that once a week.
So that was fun. And you already heard about the Harvest banquet that's going to be Saturday night. The candle lighting ceremony, one of the premier events that we have in the college to usher in the holiday season, will be on Wednesday, December the 3rd. And I think there'll probably be two sessions as always. One is at 9:00 and one is at 10:00.
11:00.
9:00 and 11:00. 9:00 and 11:00. So if you get an opportunity to attend, it's always a wonderful event. We are going to Fort Scott. The board members and I are going to Fort Scott on December the 7th and 8th for our quarterly KACC T cop meeting. That's the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees and the Council of Presidents for Kansas. We will all meet together in Fort Scott, December 7th and 8th. The holiday reception will be Wednesday, December 10th at 11:00 a.m. downstairs.
Right? Up here?
Up here. In this area, so at 10 o'clock, at 11 o'clock. Then our other annual event, Christmas in the City, is Thursday, December 18th. The, for the board, the ACCT Legislative Summit in Washington, DC is February the 9th through the 12th. Peggy needs to know of your intent to attend so that she can make your reservations and take care of the travel arrangements. The sooner we get your information, the sooner we know you are going, the better will be the rates for travel and other expenses. The Kansas Supreme Court was here and that was an event that was outstanding, that most of us will probably not have not seen and will not see again. They were very impressed and more than excited about the way KC, KCC individuals handled their visit. They wrote letters, and I know about three of the letters, to Baz, Dr. Avellanian, and his team. That includes media and Michael Kimbrough and his team and Chief Snyder and his offices. I know they wrote letters to those and they wrote a letter to the president's office. And I'll read what this one says, and I think the others were included in the reports. "Thank you for making the Kansas Supreme Court's first trip to Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas Community College, a great success. From my viewpoint, everything, and I mean everything, ran flawlessly. All the justices had to do was show up and enjoy the fruits of the hard work of you and your wonderful staff. I appreciate your beautiful campus, especially the Performing Arts Center. As a matter of fact, things went so well that we would love to come back and do it again sometime. If so, it is comforting to know dedicated professionals like you are in place to make it happen. Thank you again on behalf of my colleagues and the Kansas judicial branch of government. Sincerely, Lawden Arness, Chief Justice." So we're excited about that. I think.
You got the videos?
Oh, two things. I spoke at the Workforce and Education Summit at the Kaufman Center on Tuesday, November 4th. Whenever I speak, Michael Kimbrough and his team develop a video for me. The video that we showed was well-received. I mean, it was weird that people were clapping for the video. So it was suggested that I share the video with the board today. Well, you know, we have a vice president here who is, I wouldn't say jealous-hearted, but he wanted to know why the academic side of the house didn't also have a video. So the video you're going to see for the academic side of the house, I've not seen, but it was created so that there would be balance, workforce development and the academic programs. So Michael, you're on.
As the baby boomers retire, also known as the Silver Tsunami, the tremendous demand for skilled labor and the skilled gap is absolutely tremendous. Right now, we have 9 million Americans out of work, but there are 4 million jobs posted right now in this country. 4 million. And many of those are skilled labor positions. We share with our students be collectors of paper, whether that's ASC for auto tech, Icar for auto collision, NIMS in machine tech, ASCs, all the many certifications. Why we ask our students to be collectors of those pieces of paper? Because they tell the rest of the world, I know more than you do. Pay me. And that's the whole goal of education, to gain the necessary skills so you can go out, take care of yourself, your family, and possibly your community. There's a debate of sorts amongst economists and policymakers. What's the real cause of the sustained, long-term, high unemployment?
We've seen some improvement in the job market lately, but there's something stubborn about unemployment. Never in the last 60 years has the length of joblessness been this long.
Finding a job in the U.S. continues to be a struggle for many Americans now six years after the economic downturn of 2008. When broken down by race, unemployment rates across America show a huge race and gender
The government reported that 142,000 jobs were created last month, well below most expectations. Even so, the unemployment rate dropped from 6.2% to 6.1% in large part because what's known as the participation rate fell. In other words, even more Americans dropped out of the workforce.
Career and technical jobs in Kansas have always been readily available. Most of the jobs that are out there in the market require more than a high school diploma, but less than a four-year degree. Consistently, over the last 60 years or so, we've seen about 20% of the jobs that are available require a four-year education. The big shift in the last 20 years has been that most of the jobs are now requiring more than high school, but less than that four-year degree. And those are typically the career and technical positions.
Hello. My name is Dr. Doris Givens, President of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Kansas City, Kansas Community College is a public, urban, open-door, and comprehensive community college committed to excellence in higher education. Through an accessible and supportive learning environment, our mission is to provide higher education and lifelong learning to varied communities, primarily in Wyandotte and Leavenworth Counties. We are the most progressive, forward-thinking, forward-moving entrepreneurial community college in the entire state of Kansas. And with our Dr. Thomas R. Burck Technical Education Center, Business Innovation Center, and focus on entrepreneurship, Kansas City, Kansas Community College is preparing our students to become an active part of the workforce in Kansas City and providing training and continuing education opportunities to the local employers.
That's part one.
A high school diploma is not enough for you, I'm telling you.
I think in today's society, you can't be successful without college.
I feel like I need a college degree in order to get jobs because it's hard to get a job with just a high school diploma.
My dad's, my dad's really set on the idea of college and I also want to go just to have a good career and to be able to set my family up and have a good life ahead of me.
If you just want to get out of high school, you'll have really nothing. You'll be working at a minimum wage job, which is really nothing, to take care of you and your family.
It helps you to get to where you want to be by giving you more knowledge, showing more career options, and kind of taking a bigger step to the outside world.
I want more than just a high school diploma. That's not enough.
Well, having a high school diploma is basically saying that you graduated with a basic knowledge and understanding of. the basic knowledge and understanding of components you need just to even function in this world. And everything is like a step ladder. Once you gain what you need from college, then you're ready for your career.
I feel that the future for the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Technical Education Center will be co-op-ing with industry partners and staying abreast of top technology that we need.
As we evolve and technology continues to rule the world, I think we need to keep in mind that we'll be serving a student of three types: our web-based, our technology-savvy, our hybrid, and our student who wants on-ground services.
I see Kansas City Community College is reaching out to the community with a variety of programs that are educational in nature and top-notch.
KCKCC should be a destination of choice, not just a fallback option.
Flip the classroom to the advantage of our students. But we also understand that not all students learn the same way. They learn different paces. They need different technologies.
I also see an increased amount of community engagement through participation in volunteerism, networking, and serving the community.
I see Kansas City, Kansas Community College, in the future shedding its image as a diamond in the rough and becoming a more polished stone. The college gives students many first chances: first chances at college, first chances at careers, and some the first chance to dream of a future.
Adult and continuing education offers non-credit classes and workshops, youth activities, GED preparation and testing, and a variety of special programs to enrich the needs of a changing community. Our technical certificates prepare students to enter a specific career or vocation. We offer over 20 hands-on technical skill training programs which lead to employment in office and computer technology, service and health occupations, or trade and industrial fields. The completion times for these certificates are short, typically 11 months, and can be used as college credit towards a higher degree. To help make education as affordable as possible, we offer a variety of academic and competitive scholarships, need-based grants, employment opportunities, and loans to eligible students. Associate of Applied Science degrees are two-year programs for those students who plan to enter the workforce following graduation from KCKCC. Students elect this degree to gain entry-level knowledge and skill for employment in a specific field or occupation. Transfer degrees are two-year programs with focuses in defined academic areas and are for students wishing to pursue a bachelor's degree at a four-year institution. College credits earned in this area are not designed for specific professions.
Very nice. Thank you. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Givens. Need a motion to approve the president's report?
Motion to accept the president's report.
Second.
You have a motion to accept the president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Vice President Vitale.
Thank you, Chairman Maddox. First of all, I want to thank Michael Kimbrough and his team for putting that last video together for me. I believe it was probably Wednesday morning, Dr. Givens spoke Tuesday afternoon at the workforce summit meeting. And when I saw her the next morning, she's, we talked about this video, and so we went down and saw Mr. Kimbrough in his office. And she told him that I would have the information he would need within an hour to start working on the video. So, we left Mr. Kimbrough's office, and I was ready to go back to my office and work. She said, "Oh, no, we have to meet." So, she called me into a meeting. Once the meeting started, she says, "You know, your clock is ticking on your hour." So, anyway, I got the information to Michael and dropped down by his office late yesterday afternoon, and they had just finished the final rendering of the piece and showed it to me. And so, I told Dr. Givens that it was done, and so we wanted to show it to you. And I think they did an outstanding job in a very short time timeframe, and great, great job. Thank you, Michael. And before I ask for approval of my report, I'd like to announce some other, also some dates. As we conclude the fall semester, while we have no commencement ceremony, we do have several penning ceremonies in the nursing and allied health area. And so, you might just want to jot these down and put them on your calendar if you're available to attend because they're great events and they're really exciting and uplifting to be able to see these students recognized for what they have accomplished in the two years they've been at KCKCC, at least as a minimum, two years. On December 6th at 7:00 PM, we'll have the physical therapy assisting penning, and that will take place at the Thomas R. Burke Tech Center. At 7:00 PM on the 17th, in the Field House, we will have the nursing penning ceremony. And then on December 18th at 7:00 PM, the respiratory care penning ceremony will take place, and that also is going to be at the Tech Center this year. So, the 17th is at the Field House, and the 16th and the 18th are at the Tech, and all three ceremonies are at 7:00 PM. And trust me, if you haven't attended any one of those three ceremonies, you're in for a treat when you do. The nursing is a much, a very serious-type ceremony. PTA is a lot of fun. Respiratory is also a lot of fun. It's serious, and the students are recognized for their achievement, but the programs are much smaller, and the faculty and program managers get to know their students a lot better, and they make it a real fun event for both themselves, the students, and those of us who are there to participate in the ceremonies. So, you have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if any of you have any.
I have a couple of questions. On page nine, it talks about the access control for the business and administration areas. Will other areas also need to have this access control?
Where was this?
Page nine.
Was that police report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We are reviewing and working through those. Yes, there will be more areas that will be controlled. We live in times now that are changing, and we want to make sure that we do all we can to ensure safety for the employees at our college.
Okay. On page 10, it talks, that was also on the report, it said 147 doors unlocked. I was wondering what doors are referring to? Is that a building or what?
Those would be classroom doors.
They were what?
Those would be classroom doors.
Classroom doors?
Could be exterior doors on buildings. The buildings are locked, people wanting to get access into the buildings, so it's a wide variety.
Okay. On page 14, and then it actually goes on to page 43, but I was wondering about our internships with Chevron and where we're at and where our steps are. I understand we did not have interns for the fall, and so if we're going to be able to compensate for that with the company?
Good.
Good morning. I've asked the math and the science teachers to announce in their classes about this internship opportunity and tried to encourage students to come down to my office. I sent them all the application materials. I had two students in the early fall that were interested. One of those students I saw in the hallway, she told me she took a new job waitressing, and she did not have the time to do both. And the other student, he has still not come by. I sent him an email containing the app and the link to the description of the internship. Those were the two that I had recruited at the start of the fall. At this point, it really is in the students' hands. I mean, we've told them what it is, we've told them the price that it pays, and we have to get students that actually apply to be able to send them forward. I had one student that came by to me last week from the drafting program. He is an undocumented student, and I asked Optera a question about that, and I'm not quite clear that that's going to be an option for him in terms of that internship, but I'm not 100% certain of that either. So, I'm waiting for materials back from him, and that's basically where we are, is trying to get students to go ahead and fill out the application and submit the materials back to us, and we'll go from there.
All right, that's one on the record. On page 17, it's actually with Mr. Kimbrough's report. They were talking about working on a video for the tech. I see we already have some other videos in production. Are we going to have those linked to our website, or how are we going to be utilizing these?
Yes. They're going to be on the website, and they're on our television station. They loop. I'm not sure what times. Maybe we can get a list of the times that they're on the television station so we can share those with you.
You know, the quarterly KCCT meetings, also, Dr. Givens, trustees have been sharing from the various colleges. Our turn will come up probably before too much longer, so I think these two are great, you know, some great starting point, and, or maybe they can be utilized, but, you know. So, there's another opportunity for us.
And they would also be available if anyone was going out and meeting with a group and wanted to give a little presentation. They could be shown in that way as well.
They can be placed on, Michael would be more than happy to place them on CDs for you if you are going out and would like to show them.
That'd be good. That'd be good, sir. All right. And on page 26, on the childcare, are we at capacity at our childcare center? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right.
So, you want to have any questions for Dr. Vitale?
Dr. Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you sit on the workforce board? It don't have anything to do with your report, but do you sit on the workforce board?
Which workforce board?
For Wyandotte County.
Oh, the workforce investment board, the WIB.
No, I don't.
Do we have anybody from the college that does?
Leotus.
Yeah, Leotus.
Leotus suggests to them that the work keys be changed to keep, to help people. Kansas City, Missouri, full employment does work keys. And when you fail the work keys, they get those people's jobs. They put them in either a school, in the metro school over there, or either they send them to the tech school, but they find something for them. The work keys over here, when you fail, you're out. They just take the ones that pass for the work. That's got to change because we got 15 people at the full employment as of yesterday evening who went over there, that failed the test over here, and they are processing them.
All right, any more questions for Dr. Vitale?
If this is under you or not, Dr. Vitale, page 43, it talks about this kick butt, which is about the smoking initiative or non-smoking initiative, I guess I should say. I was wondering if there's an update on our smoking policy. We had discussed this.
I think the last I heard, it was going to, back to the dean's council to address the electronic.
The e-cigarette. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that was the last holdup, was going back somewhere because of the e-cigarette question.
Well, I didn't know, I wanted to share with you, UMKC has adopted a new smoking policy that was entire campus, absolutely no, and not even any chewing tobacco, much less the e-cigarette.
Yeah, tobacco-free campus, really.
Totally tobacco-free, and it gives a little bit of information there. Over 1,000 colleges across the country have such policies and that, and so I just thought it was interesting. There was some question about whether you could have an entire campus be smoke-free, and, well, just across the river, we have.
Many of them are, and very large universities are also, you know, tobacco-free as well.
So, I just, just the information.
I'd like to share that we're working on a grant. I found a grant to implement such a program on a campus. Melinda Kimmel, who is our grant writer, has worked with the folks on the campus to develop, and I have the letter to sign so that we can send that off so we can have some funding for implementation.
Great, great, great. Okay, appreciate that update. Thank you.
All right, you need a motion to accept Dr. Vitale's report?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept Dr. Vitale's report. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Layton? Are you going to take that?
Yes, I will be giving the report today on behalf of Mr. Layton and our team. First of all, I would like to certainly recognize Mr. Layton and the work that he has done to bring the reports forward and develop those. We're still in development of the reports so that we can compare month over month and year over year and get those finances to make the audit even more smoothly, and most importantly, to allow the president and the trustees to know where we are month to month, especially in relationship to our strategic goals. So, the first thing I'd like to do, and I may call certainly upon Mr. Layton today, this is my sixth day on the job, but what I'd like to do is to draw your attention to the bills from September. Those start, I believe, on page 46 and then run through 104. And if you look on page 105, then at that point, we have the bills that we would like to present to you for this month for payment. And as you go through those, if you have any questions, we could answer those, but it would be the recommendation of the college administration at the Board of Trustees ratify the total cash disbursements as listed and contained on those pages. And the amount is $4,961.10.
Move approval of payment of the bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved for the payment of the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
And the second thing that we would have would be the financial report. And what we have in that, as we said month over month, year over year, and again, we're adding to that, this month you'll see a cash disbursement, and so that is an addition to your packet, and I believe that is on page 140, I believe. And on that particular document, what we were looking at was the general fund, and in addition to that, the tech funds. And you will hear in our recommendations under C, what is shown in there is a transfer for this particular month, but it will allow us to track month to month where we are for cash because those cash funds inform us where we are in position for payroll, et cetera. So, we think that's an important document to produce for the board, and after reviewing that with President Givens, we include it in this packet this month.
In your review on page 131, we point out that we do have the new column there talking about our prior year, and so that's very important addition as we can see where we were. So, hopefully, for the most part, you can compare apples to apples, with the exception of the tech. As you recall, we did have to make some, I'm saying line item adjustments, I'm sure sure you, maybe is that the right terminology? And so it, it looks kind of out of sync because that, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison with the, with the tech.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that we're moving some programs that were in the general fund into the tech fund, because that's what they called it as new rendition, so you'll see some of the expenses in the tech fund a little higher than previous year, but, uh, they would have been in the general fund last year or in tech fund.
Right, and so that, that will account for that, that balance, so appreciate, uh, the additional explanation there. Then, uh, you will note on one thirty-five that that, uh, last year there was a two million dollar transfer, um, and now we're, we're requesting a million, so that's half, uh, you know, uh, we're getting, we're getting closer, and I think that's a, that's a positive thing to note, but I did want you to see, uh, by our new, uh, financial reporting, uh, formats, uh, this information is for all of us, and it is very clear, uh, now, uh, we're in, in past that, that just wasn't the case. Then on page, uh, one forty, uh, the cla- cash flow chart, uh, was also, uh, something that was requested, and so you see that, and that helps you to see the calculation and, uh, why, uh, the transfer is, is necessary. And then, of course, I'm always liking to look at our, uh, electrical usage, uh, one forty-two. Uh, please note that our kilowatt hour is at all-time low, but our costs are at all-time high. So, uh, the savings that, I, I, are, are, is real, uh, but it may not look to you, and you're saying, well, wait a minute, we're paying, you know, the same amount or more than we did the previous year, but just imagine, had we not made the investment, what our costs, uh, would be. That's what you're kind of having to, to gauge in this energy-saving, uh, process. And, uh, so I know that that is difficult, but, but I think our usage, we can, not so much focus on the cost aspect, but on our usage and seeing how there's an incredible difference, uh, being made, uh, with the improvements that, uh, this board has authorized. So, uh, with that, I move approval of the recommendations.
We haven't, uh, well, we haven't approved the financial.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made the wrong one.
Yeah.
I approve the financial reports.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Uh, next recommendations.
Next would be the recommendations, and it's C one through eight, and as you look through those, uh, you can see that the approval of payment, uh, three sixty-seven, seven thirty, sixty-nine to Commerce Bank is for the Visa credit card purchase this year. Second on that is capital assets, and this is something that, in discussion with the auditor, that we would like to have confirmed by the board. This has been the practice, um, uh, for the past couple of years, as we could ascertain that capital assets are defined by the college as assets with initial individual costs of more than five thousand dollars and an established useful life in excess of two years, and we would just like to confirm that. Third is, uh, request authority of contract, uh, and these would be, uh, additional voicemail boxes for the adjunct faculty. And, um, fourth on that list is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars additional authority with Optera, formerly Chevron. And, and there are some changes on this. What the most significant one that you will see coming forward is the globe lights on, on campus will be changed out. One of the requests is for a vented globe, and, uh, I, I'm sure that, um, you know, Mr. Sixta could provide some additional information on this, but the, uh, effect that we were having was that the globe was melting with the, uh, temperature of the current bulb, and so we had to change, we will be changing those, and that, that is an additional, uh, change to the project. The current changes to date are just under two hundred thousand dollars. They're one eighty-six, five eighty-three, and that comes out of the capital fund. Um, and then, as Trustee Rios, um, referred to, we are asking for a million-dollar transfer, and that would be from all our auxiliary fund, student, uh, union fund, uh, to the general fund to cover, um, during that time. Next would be approval of twenty-two thousand for Blackboard for SIS integration online, uh, approval of payment again, uh, for intelligent learning platform license solution, uh, for Information Services Department. And last but not least, and I think this one, um, calls for special recognition, uh, to both Doug and Bob for their work on the workers' compensation, um, uh, payment that we have to make. As I understand it, it was quite a negotiation, and these two are to be commended on their work, um, to, to keep the, the cost as low as it could be for the institution, so we thank you for that, and would like to present, uh, approval of, um, the recommendations, uh, C one through eight.
I do, would like to add on number eight. Now, uh, that reduction, it was about, uh, the initial, uh, request was, uh, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and we got that down to sixty-seven, uh, thousand dollars. So, uh, this was significant work. Uh, the nine forty-ones, am I getting that right?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm learning a lot more and asking more questions into this finance, uh, so, uh, but anyway, I do want the, uh, board members to be aware that, that this is very significant, uh, work in regards to what our auditor was talking about earlier. And so, um, there's a direct tie-in, uh, to the current work and, uh, what was shared with us by, uh, Mr. Miller. And again, through the stellar efforts of staff, uh, we see a, a great difference. On number four, uh, the Finance Committee has requested, and the Administration will provide, a report at the end of the project, uh, and so we have a full understanding of the scope and the costs and, uh, that, so, uh, we will get, we will receive that, uh, so that, uh, we, uh, fully understand, uh, what our, what we call our Chevron project, uh, really entailed, and, uh, give, uh, more detail, uh, when the, uh, project is at its conclusion. So we, uh, we will be, uh, sharing that with the board. And with that, I move approval of the recommendations.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the recommendations, uh, C, one through.
Eight.
Eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Now to the Director of Human Resources, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to present the, uh, November two thousand fourteen Personnel Agenda. Items one and two are for your review, and then I would like to submit items three through eleven for your approval.
Is there a motion to accept, uh, the HR report?
So move.
Second. Moved and seconded to accept the, uh, Human Resources Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Cheryl, we see that, uh, you're listed as one of the items in that section, and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, you're going to be, um, recognized appropriately for your service at the college, but I certainly want to recognize that it's been a pleasure working with you and appreciate your work.
Second that.
Yes, second that emotion.
Okay, reports from committees. Hearing none, I'll, I'll ask for any unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, I have a, uh, item I'd like to bring up recently in, uh, the news. Some of you may seen, uh, reports about, uh, Harvesters Food Distribution in our community that run into some difficulty with the location where they were distributing the food now, uh, which is out here at about eighty-eighth and eighty-ninth and Parallel Parkway. So, I have been working with the people from the food distribution, also from the Harvesters, as well as a number of groups of our students and various groups of the campus have been, uh, volunteering, uh, and doing community service hours with this effort on the second and third Wednesdays, second, excuse me, second, third Saturdays of each month for this food distribution. Uh, they're needing an alternate location, and, um, so I had just a brief preliminary conversation with Chief Snyder as we, as my thought was, we may be able to come up some space, uh, KCKCC, um, to be able to partner with Harvesters and, uh, local church, local civitan club. And, um, I've learned in this process as well, we have a number of our students that actually received food, uh, at this distribution as well, in addition to the students volunteering and doing community service, so, like to, uh, discuss with you further or get some sense from the board, uh, if you feel this would be, uh, possibly appropriate, uh, partnership for us to consider. Chief Snyder and I have come to the conclusion that this activity on the second and third Saturday of the month might best fit at the, uh, parking lot at the Tech Center, the Sixty-fifth and State. There is student activity there, uh, minimal student activity there on Saturdays, um, but it's our assessment that there's enough other space in the parking, the huge parking area that we have there that we could, uh, we could work, and this could possibly be a site for the food distribution to occur. Truck delivers the food, the volunteers prepare the bags for, uh, distribution, they begin distributing the food, and that entire process takes about two to two and a half hours. So I think they schedule one food distribution at noon, and the other Saturday, I believe, it's scheduled for two, uh, in the afternoon, so those would be the timeframes. The people that frequent the distribution and receive the food oftentimes come two, three hours ahead of time to line up and be prepared to, you know, receive the distribution once it starts, and, uh, it's Chief's assessment in mind that we would have the space there to accommodate those cars, uh, while they waited for the distribution to begin. So I just wanted to bring that up for the board, uh, you know, consider and think about. Dr. Givens would like to talk to you a little bit more about it, um, and certainly, if anyone has any comments or, uh, thoughts regarding it, why, uh, I'm certainly open to that as well.
Well, my only question, um, is I think such a endeavor is certainly worth, um, investigating and, and pursuing, uh, you know, got to take, uh, very seriously our commitment, uh, and our title of community, in community college, and, uh, if there's a need, and, uh, we can, uh, effectively and efficiently assist in addressing whatever the community need is, then I feel, um, that the college should make every effort to try, uh, to provide that, so I, I don't have a concern in the, in us investigating. Only thing that, uh, comes to mind is, how do they, um, well, for lack of better terminology, uh, you know, security, policing, the traffic flow, I understand that's why there's a discord, um, because some of the neighbors by the church were concerned, um, on the traffic flow and that kind of thing, so how would this be a, something that would be a, a cost to the, uh, college, or with a city partner, or how, what are you envisioning there?
Well, my, my thought was, uh, they tried to do this without any additional cost to the college whatsoever. They currently manage the distribution with all volunteers over there, so they have volunteers assisting in the cars that are lining up, which are lining up currently in a neighborhood, and as you said, that's, you know, what the problem is, and then they have to traverse from the neighborhood out onto parallel to get into the church parking lot, which can only handle so many of them at a time, and, and that's what the, the real difficulty is. So I don't see us having that problem because we have such a large lot, the people can just drive in the lot, the volunteers will assist them in parking, and when it comes time for them to distribute the food, the volunteers will release them in the order that they park them, and they'll just, uh, will create a, a traffic flow, uh, given our physical, uh, site there, uh, so that they flow and they go right on out. Now, I think, um, obviously, as Chief and I discussed, he'd want to have the campus officers monitor this, you know, somewhat closely in our first, uh, with any new venture, you know, you may have a couple of adjustments to make and some, um, and, and some things that you'll tweak or change, um, but my thought was to do it in such a manner, and they have plenty of volunteers. Once again, many of the volunteers are our students down there. They have plenty of volunteers to, to handle it, um, and then the campus police would sort of oversee it as part of their normal, um, presence there at the Tech Center. I don't think it would require any additional, uh, police officers. Greg and I can discuss that if we decide to move forward with this and really meet with the people and get into the details of the logistic needs, uh, you know, we may have something different to tell you, you know, later, but the intent, my intent was so that it would not incur any additional cost per se to the college.
All right. And then the only other thing is, if we could use that opportunity, perhaps some of these individuals being in need, uh, if they could further their education, could, uh, actually be empowered to, uh, you know, address their need, um, in other ways, uh, could we, uh, you know, insert, I don't know what, that would be up to you all. Yeah, something about the college information. That could get them into, uh, you know, a career track at, that could have them then become independent, uh, and not have the need, uh, that they, but they may not see as a real option.
Yep.
So we may be able to take an advantage of helping by also letting them know that we can also empower and, uh, uh, through our work, um, as an institution, and, uh, you know, start getting that line to be a little shorter.
I think it's an excellent idea, only thing, be sure you check out everything on the insurance.
All right, any further discussion? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed.